We're going to begin our March meeting of the Cituate Zoning Board of Appeals. Quickly, in response to Governor, everyone could probably recite this by heart. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of the public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, town of Cituate meeting shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and can be viewed live on Cituate Community Television's Facebook page. The recording, the recorded meeting will be available the following day on Comcast Channel 9 and YouTube's Cituate Community Television. If you are interested, this meeting can be attended live on Zoom and the instructions for that are on the meeting agenda posted on the ZBA's website. We are going to begin with our first application, continued from February 25th, 2021. The application of Brian and Melanie Leggy, care of Walter B. Sullivan, requesting a variance to allow for the construction of a 30 by 15 swimming pool and a 10 by 12 foot poolhouse on the south side of the lot closest to Parker Avenue, which is a non-conforming lot at 9 Moreland Road in Cituate. That applicant requested in writing a withdrawal without prejudice. The applicant is not present here at the meeting. I, I informed them that I didn't feel that they needed to be. And unless anyone does, any of the board members have any feelings on allowing that withdrawal without prejudice? Any concerns? It doesn't look like it. With that, I'll make a motion that we allow the withdrawal of the Leggy application without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor, a roll call, Bukary, aye.
Harrison, aye.
Kavanaugh abstained.
Seeks us aye.
Well, there we go. That application has been withdrawn. And there's no decision need to be written. Janine, that's typically just noted in the minutes and we will move on from there. Our second application of Michael P. McAvoy of 29 Highfield Lane in Norwell, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL 48, section 6, and/or section 8, 10.2 of the Cituate zoning bylaw, to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 298 Central Avenue in Cituate, which is increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%. Are the McAvoy's available or is...
Hi, I'm Mike McAvoy, I'm on. I'm waiting for my architect, Dick Rockwood, to jump on as well. He said he's doing it right now.
Okay, we'll give him one minute. And, and if he doesn't jump on, we'll just move you back one in the line.
Okay, great, thank you.
No problem.
I just, I just let someone in.
Yeah, I think we made the, made the minute deadline.
Seconds to go.
Yeah.
No extra points for that, but it is commended. Mr. Rockwood, we actually just called your application to order, I believe. Would you, would you have your plan here in front of us?
Okay.
Just quickly, what's going on here?
We have an existing two-story house on pilings and the second floor is probably, let's say, 60% capacity. It's sort of cape-like in the front and a shed in the back. So the client would like to broaden the second floor and add the storage attic up above, which would, you know, it'd be a walk-up. So it would become a two-and-a-half-story house.
So no change to the existing footprint whatsoever?
No change in the footprint whatsoever. There's a little 12 by 12 wing on it that's a one-story, so that's also going up in elevation too. So he has, just broadening his living space for the bedrooms and stuff upstairs, so.
I got you.
All over the existing, no foundation work, not expanding anything outside of what we have.
Fantastic. Tom, George, Susan, any questions, anything to add?
Just one thing to, to Bob, will they have to provide something that this is, you know, from a structural engineer, that this addition doesn't cause anything relative to the pilings or anything?
Oh, we could look at that. Certainly a consideration. The other one is an elevation certificate to make sure that the first living floor is above the FEMA flood elevation requirement.
Okay, we're proposing to do this as not a substantial improvement based on what we have. So we have, we have the proper math and stuff, which I'll run by you.
Sure, okay.
I don't have anything else.
All right. Bob, did you have anything else you wanted to add on this one?
No, really, that was, that was going to be my comment.
All right. With that, we're going to open it up to public comment. You can raise your physical hand by turning on your video. You could raise your hand using the Zoom feature and then we can, we can unmute you. So I'm going to give everyone a moment here to raise one of their hands on the 298 Central Ave application. Don't see anything and that's not really that surprising, given the nature of this application. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section and ask my fellow board members if we have a motion.
I'd make a motion on the application of Michael P. McAvoy of 29 Highfield Lane, Norwell, Massachusetts, in his request for a special permit finding in accordance with Mass General Law 48, section 6, and 8, 10.2 of the Cituate bylaw, for his request to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 298 Central Ave, Cituate, Mass, increasing the footprint, not increasing the footprint, but increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%, as depicted on the plan prepared by McKenzie Engineering Group dated January 19th, 2021, that the pro, the proposed addition does not create any new non-conformities or intensify any existing non-conformities, and to the extent it does, it's not substantially more detrimental to the community.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
A roll call in favor, Bukary, aye?
Kavanaugh, aye.
Seeks us aye.
Harrison, aye.
There we go, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you all.
And I will take that decision. It's been a while since I've done one. All right, we're going to move on to our second application. Excuse me, our third application, given the withdrawal, is that of Daniel and Anna Shay of 138 R Hollitt Street in Cituate, requesting a special permit or finding in accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10.2 of the Cituate zoning bylaw, to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling at 138 R Hollitt Street in Cituate, which is increasing the gross floor area by more than 20%.
Anthony, on this one, you might see in the application, my name's on the deed, these are clients of mine, I recuse myself, so I'd go dark for a little bit.
Okay, that sounds good. With that, is the applicant available?
Yes, this is Gregory Morrison, behalf of the applicant.
Greg, how are you?
Good.
Greg, why don't you tell us quickly what we got going on here?
Again, for the record, Greg Morrison, a registered engineer, representing Daniel and Anna Shay, requesting a special permit in accordance with section 8, 10.2, and/or a chapter 48, section 6 finding, to allow an addition at the Shay's house located at 138 R Hollitt Street. The properties in the R2 zoning district, the home was built around 1900. It's on a non-conforming lot. The lot is non-conforming with respect to lot frontage, having 71.56 feet, and non-conforming with respect to lot width, where the house is located, the lot width is 116 feet. This lot is unique in the fact there are actually two homes. Both homes are from the 1900 era. Both homes are located on this single lot. The Shays obviously own both of them. 138R is the home in the back. It's rather small in size, it's 990 square feet. They want to add a two-story addition to the back of the home. The two-story addition will bring the total floor area up to 1,898 square feet. It represents a 91.7% increase. The home itself complies with all setbacks for side yard, front yard setback, and rear yard. There is no change to the two non-conformities here, the frontage or the width. I turn it over to you.
Thank you. So you mentioned the Shays, obviously own both homes, they own the entirety of the property. What's, are they, are they occupying both homes or are they utilizing both homes? What's, what's going on with the use here?
Sure, I, I believe one of the homes is rented out. They do occupy 138R, which is the subject of this application.
Okay, and Bob, for you, where the two homes predate, do we have any information that this property being used essentially for multifamily predates the code?
Well, the fact that both homes were built prior to zoning, pretty much tells you that there's, there's no infractions going on at this point.
So you're taking the position that the existence of two homes on a lot, whether or not they were historically used by a, a single family, just as two buildings that weren't connected, that that existence alone allows for the continued and go-forward use of one home by the owner and another home for rental purposes?
Right, you know, it gets into a little bit murkier waters when you may want to sell one home to another party so that the homes end up not in the same ownership. But in this case, I think it's pretty straightforward.
That was really my question. If that's the way the town has traditionally interpreted that chain of events, I don't, I don't have an issue with it. Obviously, the existence of two separate buildings, uses homes on this lot since before the imposition of the code is not in dispute to me, so. That's it for me. George or Susan?
Nope, that was my question.
Yeah, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Absolutely. You know, I see, Greg, no, no changes at all to the garage that's staying there?
Correct, that's staying.
I, I did have one question, just curiosity more than anything else. The photograph, I assume the yellow-fronted house is the one that's designated as, as 138 in the photographs that we were supplied? And that the tiny houses behind it is the 138R that we're talking about?
That's correct.
So it looks like on the left of that photograph, there's actually a third, perhaps, house. Is that on this property? I don't see, see it on the sight plane.
No, that's on the property immediately to the left. It is close to the lot line, the Machino, I believe is the last name.
Okay. Sorry, let's just say, just curious.
Yep, that, that's the Machino property, Machini.
And Greg, are we, are we town sewer over here? What do we got?
No, this is served by a septic system.
And are, are we adding, is there a bedroom addition at 138R or no?
I don't believe that there is, but in the event there is, they would have to upgrade their septic system.
I got you. Susan or George, I, I think you guys are all set, please speak up if you're not. Bob, I, I think you're all set as well, but again, please add anything else.
I'm good.
Like, and I'll model that over, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Again, you can turn on your video and raise your, your physical hand, or you can raise your hand using the Zoom feature and we'll get you unmuted so we can hear what you have to say on this application at 138R Hollitt Street. Give everyone a moment if they need to. And yes, Ms. Shay, we're going to go ahead and unmute you. Hopefully you don't have a problem with this application. There you go.
There's no bedroom being added.
Oh, thank you very much. But you are otherwise in support of the application?
Yes.
Okay, good. I don't see anyone else, so I would ask if we have a motion. I will make a motion. I would make a motion that the board find that the application of Daniel and Anna Shay at 138R Hollitt Street in Cituate, find to allow the addition to the 138R structure on the premises in accordance with the plan drawn by Morse Engineering dated January 21st, 2021, and further, the board find that such addition does not create any new non-conformities and that to the extent it intensifies any existing non-conformities, such intensification is not more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bukary, aye?
Harrison, aye.
Seeks us aye.
There we go, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Greg, you too.
Want to take a stab at that?
I can write this one. Did you say me? Yeah, I can do this one.
All right. There we go. And we are moving right along. We're going to move on to our fourth application, brought by Jeffrey and Cynthia Schechter of 50 Oakwood Avenue in Montclair, New Jersey, requesting a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw, section 470, and/or any relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to authorize the construction of a second floor in the existing dimensionally conforming, single-family dwelling on a dimensionally conforming lot in the Cituate floodplain and watershed protection district, overlay district, excuse me, for the property of 143 Jericho Road in Cituate.
Hi, Anthony, members of the board, Jeff Delisi, Armberger, Delisi, and Harris. I'm here tonight with, I think, I think Paul Maribito's here, but I'm not certain. I don't see him. I see Jeffrey Schechter, who's my client, a fellow friend from New Jersey. And basically, I think that this is, shall I say, about as easy as it gets? Conforming lot, conforming house, we're just going to add a second floor, the property's in the floodplain, we're not even really doing any activities on the ground. And so we have to request a special permit as a result of the floodplain. It's a substantial improvement to an existing structure that pre-existed per the assessor records, the date set forth in the bylaw, and I think for good measure, we would request that the board issue a finding that what we're doing is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there now.
Thank you.
And that's it. You're welcome.
I was, I was born in New Jersey. Good to see more New Jerseyans moving to Cituate. And, and I played Montclair's golf course a few years ago. It was beautiful.
Great, I've played it too. Ah, there's some beautiful golf course.
Yeah, I, I personally don't have any questions on this application. As far as I can see, we got, we have a, a legal lot and a legal house, and the house was built, I believe, prior to the creation of the floodplain watershed protection district. So now, therefore, what's deemed as a substantial improvement.
Okay. That's what your documents say.
Yes. George, Susan, Tom, anything to add or any questions?
No, I don't think so.
I don't have anything.
Bob, we're missing anything?
Well, no, not from the zoning perspective. The house is in the floodplain, so we'll have to take a look at conforming to FEMA requirements on that.
Yes, and on that, I guess I actually do have a question, and, and maybe we don't know, or maybe, Paul, you know, is this house, is the rest of the house going to need to come up at all? I, I did notice that the, the front of the home along Jericho there is, is not that elevated. Does it need improvements? What's going to have to happen there?
So what the, what the, what the rule is, I'm going to jump in, Paul, on this one, is under the building code, if you do, if you do an improvement that is more than 50% of the value of the property, then you have to bring the improvement into full compliance with the FEMA regulations, and we're, we're not doing an improvement that's more than 50%, so we don't need to do that.
Well, congratulations on the lot being worth so much.
Yeah, well, actually, the second floor that we're putting on is, is less area than the first floor, so it's not an actual double of the footprint. So it's kind of a, a no-brainer analysis because of that.
There we go.
You might want to get an appraisal at some point as opposed to relying on the assessed value. We'll see.
I'm not aware of a requirement for an appraisal, but...
Well, there's no, there's no requirement, Jeff. I'm just saying that it'll give you a higher number to base your 50% on, to try and stay below that threshold.
Understood, Bob. I think from a zoning perspective, for purposes of tonight's hearing, it's irrelevant. We'll take a look at that, Bob.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I, Jeff, I would agree, we're going to condition our approval on compliance with the flood insurance program. The method that you gain that compliance is, I would agree, not, not a concern of this board, as long as you do get it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, Bob, anything else?
Uh, no, not for me.
And then, because we are, really, there are no non-conformities here, so what the board is considering is 470.6F, Jeff, if you would agree. I see, I think we might have a couple of public comments here. I see some people still on, unless maybe they're on for our parking discussion. But just quickly, 470.6F requires that the application be in accordance with the following. Number one, the improvements being consistent with the requirements of National Flood Insurance Program. Two, the improvements being consistent with those provisions of the state building code pertaining to flood-resistant construction. And three, that any improvements shall not affect the natural drainage patterns of the water course. On that note, Jeff, I think you alluded to it earlier, this is a second floor, we're not changing the footprint of the home, so it would be hard to be too concerned that it's changing the flowage or water course patterns.
Yeah, I mean, we're simply not in a water course anyway, so it's, yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
With that, anyone who would like to ask a question or raise a comment, we would ask that you raise your real or virtual hand so you can be heard. Not look like we have anyone. We have Athleen and Debbie and Linda are not here to speak on this application, it looks like. So we will close the public comment section. And would someone like to make a motion? Again, that's 470.6F.
I'd make a motion on the application of Jeffrey and Cynthia Schechter of 50 Oakwood Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey, on their request for a special permit pursuant to the town of Cituate zoning bylaw, section 470F, for the construction of a second floor to an existing dimensionally conforming, single-family dwelling on a dimensionally conforming lot within this town of Cituate floodplain in watershed protection district, as depicted on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering, dated February 4th, 2021, and stamped by Paul Maribito, that the proposed addition is a substantial improvement of an existing structure which legally existed on the date of the amendment of the bylaw, and that the special permit be issued, and that such improvements must be consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Plan Insurance Program, and also subsection 2 and 3 of 470.6F also must be complied with.
I would add, Tom, just to modify that, I think, I, we, we're finding tonight, and I told you in motion, that 2 and 3 are complied with, and we're just conditioning on...
Section 1. Of subsection 1. So I'd make that amendment that conditioned on the fact that the proposed addition is in compliance with 470.6F subsection 1.
Before we, second, Jeff, did you just say something? You're unmuted.
I was talking to my wife, but I do, I do have something to add. I will be happy to draft the decision for you, and I'm not going to be able to stick around for the next meeting, but my encouragement on that meeting would be that the board write a letter, vote to write a letter to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee in the town to encourage the town to implement a system for overnight parking with stickers for residents in the Harbor District. And that would be that.
With, that's appreciated, Jeff, we're definitely going to discuss that on the next one. With that, I will second Tom's motion for the requested finding on this application. All those in favor with a quick roll call, Bukary, aye?
Kavanaugh, aye.
Seeks us aye.
Harrison, aye.
There we go, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Paul and Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Very good, yeah.
All right. Doing pretty good here, 7:30. We're going to move on to item number three on our meeting agenda, a discussion of a proposed harbor resident proposed harbor resident sticker parking. I had, really, everyone had, it seems, agreed at our last meeting that it'd be, we wanted to put it on the agenda, have what, a discussion about the board making a recommendation to town. I, well, I didn't want a very important application to be put aside, and at the last meeting, I do think this is a worthwhile idea. I've given it some thought. I'm a citizen of town that uses the town parking in the harbor quite a bit. Other than the harbor days and some of that stuff, I've never seen that that parking was insufficient or had trouble parking there, and I think that most other cities do it, and that folks that own and live in that proximity, I would feel should have one. I don't know the numbers. I think that that's, it's obviously something that needs to be looked at, but if there's 300 spots in that town lot, and we have 300 residents in the district that we're proposing, then maybe this isn't such a great idea. But I don't think the numbers are like that, and I think that there's a chance that we may have enough parking in that town lot, enough public parking in that town lot, Coal Parkway, I think we should refer to it, where we should be affording residences one overnight parking sticker that allows them to park in Coal Parkway. And I would encourage the town, as a citizen and as a member of this board, to look into that and crunch those numbers. Obviously, I don't think it's quite as simple as just saying, "We should do it," and starting to issue stickers. There should be a cost, it should not be prohibitive, but I, you know, the town, for better or worse, has approved residences in that district without any parking, and I think it's in the town's interest to enforce that the general public shouldn't be parking overnight in Coal Parkway, but maybe residents, especially, I would propose one car per residence via a sticker, and if they wanted to move the sticker to a renter or whatever it was, I'd be of the opinion that that was their business, but I would tend to think that it would make sense, if we have adequate parking, once the numbers are crunched, to offer that to residents in that district. I'd be interested if you hear first what the rest of the board thinks.
I'd agree with you, Anthony, and like you said, don't know what the number is. There's obviously a ratio, and I'm not sure if that's our job, but I think, I think it would probably be incumbent upon us to try to support something so that the town actually looks into this. Maybe a letter from us would start a conversation, and there would be people that could look into this, and we could, they could tally up the spots, they could tally up the residents, the number of units. You know, I'm guessing there'd probably be some sort of traffic study done, and I'm just hoping that maybe something we do could get the ball rolling so that there can be some sort of investigation into this to determine, you know, if there is spots, how many spots would be reasonable, where those spots would be located, you know, and the conditions on them, renters, owners, transferability to, you know, if somebody was to rent their unit, if somebody could simply, you know, transfer that to somebody else. But I think, I think it's a conversation that needs to be had, especially down there, especially for some of those residents down in there that, like you said, don't have the benefit of onsite parking, which is associated with their unit. And we've all seen the storms that have come in, and we've all seen, you know, there's certain things that happen down in the harbor, or Heritage Days or something, where parking becomes real tight, there's parades, there's all sorts of stuff. So, you know, trying to locate, delineate, and find spots for residents so that, you know, they have some sort of parking, some sort of comfort level when they come home, I think it's worthwhile, for sure.
I mean, I generally agree. I think it's important for people that don't have a place to park, that live in that area, to have options, but I think it is a discussion also with respect to what other uses are in that, for Coal Parkway, right? I mean, what do we, you know, if you're gonna have carnivals and Heritage Days and those things, and you have assigned 150 parking spots to residents, right, which I could see happening, where do those events occur, right? So there's downstream implications. I think it's a great idea. I think it should be done. I think we should think about it as a town. I think it really needs to be thought through as far as what, doing that, what it would do, but those people are in great need. People that live there that don't have other places to park, that don't have assigned parking, don't have a garage or a spot, it's difficult, and, you know, I agree. I think a sticker program would make sense.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, I wanna clarify one thing, Anthony. So when I was saying carnival and Heritage Days, those are important things in this town, and I'm not saying not continue them or anything to that effect. What I'm saying is, when this is all evaluated, those certain things need to be taken in consideration. Maybe there is certain days that there has to be alternative parking found, or maybe there's other parking spots that would be accessible notwithstanding, you know, the other celebrations that happen in the harbor, because those are also, like we said, very important to the harbor, very important to the town. But I feel like it's something that is gonna require a fair amount of work, and, you know, really getting to the nitty-gritty and looking at everything that goes on down there and trying to accommodate, you know, everybody as much as you can.
Right. I just think, and, you know, I think someone's gonna be against this, right? They're gonna say, "That's a public lot, that's not, these people bought a condo with no parking, knowing that they shouldn't be allowed to park there." And I thought about that, I went through that thought process for myself, but the street in front of my house is a public road too, but if I park there overnight, or if I have guests that park there overnight, they're not gonna get towed, because there's no ban on overnight parking there. And so in terms of that fairness, I think that's something to keep in mind. I, you know, it's, I doubt that the answer is that every residence gets as many overnight parking spots as they want, or I doubt the answer is that they even get two. There probably just isn't enough parking that then to still meet the town's needs. And maybe the answer isn't that every residence gets one. Maybe it's gonna be a first-come, first-served.
I think they should be answered.
Somebody, I'm gonna, we're gonna mute that person. There we go. And maybe it's, you know, not everybody gets it, maybe it's a little bit more money than people want it to be, but I'd be surprised if we can't offer anything to some of those residents, and maybe we can't, but I think it's a conversation that should be had.
Yeah. I agree with everything that's been said, and I think we're a board that is finding ourselves approving additional units or condos or apartments, or whatever they wanna call them, in a spot where there's a stress on parking, and we don't have the ability to solve that, so I think it's a good idea to elevate that to another board that does have the ability to solve it, or has the ability to, you know, engage the public in more solutions. And a letter from us may help, but I am also very much interested in the people's opinions that called in. I know we talked to Debbie before, but I'm also curious what the public thinks about this, or what the residents think that called in.
With that, Debbie, do you wanna go first? Let me see if I need to help you. Oh, I think I... Debbie, you might have to click it one more time, that's my fault.
Okay, okay, all right, I think I'm all set. All right, so, obviously, when I talked last time, it was specifically because there was new, a new development happening, so just to kind of give you a little bit of a background, we are on 124 Front Street. We, we did not, we do not have parking. It's not in our master deed. Chapter 183A requires our master deeds to have a spot for parking. There's, it's literally eliminated, so there isn't any, any part of parking on there. In saying that, we, doing a lot of research, I've done a ton of research of, like, even the building back in 1900, in the early 1900s, there was no, there was no cars, there was the horse and buggy, there's archived pictures with this building with the horse and buggy, like, we're that old, as far as with the, with the existing building. The 1980s, I believe, the harbor got reconfigured for wider sidewalks there, so it eliminated, I believe, like, 28, 29 parking spots right there. I guess the objective was, everyone was to go over to Coal Parkway, and so here we go over to Coal Parkway, and, you know, just, when this development was, 103 was developed back in 2001, it, it was at the preface that we're going from 679 seats to 219 seats, and it was gonna, you know, be better. 20 years later, it's, it's a lot. It's, and it's not just with the carnival and Heritage Days. We love, like, we're the biggest advocates for all that, for everything in the harbor. That's why we live here. However, there, there's so much, well, the boating, the, when we talked about it last week or a few weeks ago, there's, I think it's 1.5 parking spots per boat slip, and for the town bylaw, where there's 90 over Mill Wharf, and public, there's gotta be, you know, I didn't count them, there's gotta be well over, well over 100 right there. So, when families come, they're there, they could be, they could be there for a week, you know, park their car, and they're gone on a boat trip for the, you know, for a week at a time, and it just gets overwhelming, we do not have parking. So what I'm saying is that I don't, we're the only, I believe we're the only building that does not have parking. Everyone else at least has one. They bought at least with one. We don't have anything. So I'm not really saying, like, that it has to be so large that everyone that lives here gets one. It's because majority of people already have one. They already have parking.
So...
Yeah?
Debbie, on that front, I don't mean to cut you off, and I will, I'll absolutely let you finish your point, but you're going down a different path than I was supporting thus far in the meeting. I would feel strongly, and I'd be open to hearing what the other board members thought, that the board supporting essentially resident parking for the, for the Harbor District there would be equal for any residents within that Harbor District. I would not necessarily support it.
Right.
Any benefit or priority for a unit that didn't have parking as opposed to one that did.
Okay.
That's just going down another path for me.
I guess I was just trying to make it where, you know, there's probably a different situation for...
No, I...
So, what it comes down to is like, yeah, we don't have parking, whether it be from Thursday to, Thursday to Sunday, from May, May to October. It's, you know, they, there's so many issues, you know, just coming home, not even that, we've got, you know, we have a lot of the residents now work remotely, so, you know, they're here all day, you know, and we have some that work nights, 12 to 7 o'clock in the morning, they come home, they just can't get, they can't get home. There's so many situations where we don't have parking. The, my concern is this, though, is the way the structure is, A, B, C, D parking. It worked for, you know, just, I wouldn't even say it worked very well, because it was over in the flood zone, number one. Number two, it wasn't, we couldn't get into that D-zone. So my recommendation is that, you know, the people that have the Harbor residents aren't restricted to where, as far as, like, if they can't go to D because it's full, where do we go? You know? Can we go to A? And not risk getting a sticker or a, you know, being towed?
I think that's a, I think all of that is a next-level conversation, too.
Yeah.
I think, I think, I don't think what we're gonna do tonight is make a bylaw. I think what we're gonna do tonight is send a letter to somebody on a board that is much different than ours, to have somebody and recommend that they take a look at it, but I think trying to legislate tonight is not a good idea. But I think it's, it's a good brainstorming, but I'm not sure that right now is the time to try to create bylaws and legislation relative to where, who, A, B, C, D in parking. And I understand that they're absolutely live issues, and they're something that everybody deals with, that lives down there. But like I said, I think the function of tonight's discussion was kind of to talk about whether or not, you know, it would make sense for our board to write a letter, whether it be, you know, whichever board that we feel should receive it, whether or not this board would be in support of Harbor resident sticker parking, and that we ask that, you know, that be explored by the town.
Okay, and that, at least we've gotten this far. It took me about almost five years to get this, to at least get, you know, this far. I think Bob Vogel knows that, you know, I was talking to him. But that, the new residents, the condos that are going in, under, where the theater is, so I'm assuming that they're gonna be over in public Parkway too, over at the Coal Parkway.
Well, no one's allowed to park overnight in Coal Parkway now, right?
I think it's D parking.
So there is some overnight parking allowed?
D parking.
In the D-zone?
Yeah, in the, in the large lot, there's an overnight section.
There's an overnight section, but, but I'm allowed to park there, just like...
Me too, yeah, yeah. Everybody.
So, right, so I guess...
Many towns.
Really, anyone's allowed to park there.
Right, non-resident too, right. Good point, Tom.
What I, what I was under the impression that the, that the board would be in support of is, is the town further exploring our ability to issue resident stickers to residences existing in the Harbor District, to allow the holder of that sticker to have overnight parking in Coal Parkway above and beyond what is available to the public now. And I see the rest of the board nodding their head. I see, I see Debbie thinking, "We're gonna hear from Linda and maybe someone else too." And I think that's going to be a question of, I don't know that I would necessarily extend that to residents having some sort of advanced parking right throughout the day, or designating spots in Coal Parkway that were only for resident parking. I think it would be simpler and therefore more likely to actually come to fruition if the town just issued some stickers to residents and those residents didn't get ticketed for leaving their car overnight in the Coal Parkway lot. I, but, you know, I, the way I would propose, that the board proposes to the rest of town government, in that we'd like to see town, the Situ's town government, explore allowing expanded overnight parking to residents of the Harbor District. The number, exact parameters or timing of that, all TBD, but right now, someone who owns property in the Harbor District, who owns a home in the Harbor District, doesn't have any more right to park in public parking overnight than I do, and maybe they should. And that, that's what, I think making it that simple makes it more likely that it moves further along.
Mm-hmm. I agree. I agree.
I agree.
Um, Linda, did you have anything? I realized we might have stolen your thunder with, with all of Debbie.
Love it. No, no, I love it. Hello, everyone. Um, it's a breath of fresh air, hear, hearing all of this and the um, willingness to um, explore, uh, explore this and bring this up to a board that can actually um, do something and, and make it happen. Um, I, I, so that's first and foremost. And we're very much, you know, we appreciate anything that you guys can do to help us. Um, just to add on to, um, a little bit to what Debbie said, she has been, have meetings upon meetings, um, for five, six years trying to move this along. So you guys, very, uh, thank you very much for helping us. Um, just a couple of things for, uh, there is a lot of commercial parking in there, like anybody who owns a, an eighteen wheeler or a truck or anything like that. I mean, that, that's, they're all in there. Um, that is bizarre. I mean, I, any, it, it's the best deal around, I guess. Anyone who owns commercial property doesn't need to have a, a driveway for their eighteen wheeler. Um, but it's also, um, to, as everyone's thinking about all of this, if you could take into consideration that we, um, you, you can't, um, what, lack of a better word, you can't tell somebody, um, they can't park somewhere if they're a resident, a harbor resident, but just to keep in mind that we are the only building in town that um, doesn't have parking and that was because, you know, the building existed prior to um, parking needs. Um, and when the building was built and condos were sold, um, it was, there was parking. And that was, that, that was for the condominiums, that made sense. And it was attractive, you can go outside and bring your bundles in. It's, it's cold, it's windy, you can, it's dark, you're a female, you're walking home, you could park there. And then the spaces got taken away and, um, so if you can keep that in, in mind. And also, um, yeah, just the flooding, the area of, um, you know, it, when the, uh, you lose your car if you leave it in, in the designated parking now, it floods, it floods there. So, um, um, that's something to take into consideration. But also, in the summertime, the, um, the, the people in the public or, uh, the public marina, they can't find parking when, um, for their boats, not for their boats, but when their boats are in the water, they can't, they can't find parking in that space, in that, um, lot. So it's a huge concern. So, um, anything some, everyone could be thinking about um, to sort of, you know, weed out some of these issues would be very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Kathleen, I, I see you on, do you have anything to add? Oh, you're up, your hand is up. There we go. You do.
Oh, Kathleen.
Kathleen, sorry, you're still on mute. There you go.
There you go. Hi, um, yes, I know how to use a Zoom raise hand feature.
Very good.
Um, and uh, I just want to, um, first of all, I'm Kathleen Baldwin, I live at one twenty-four. I have here, uh, lived here since two thousand and six. I am a true non-native of Massachusetts. So I'll be quite honest, I didn't know what I was in for when I came here. I saw nice, quiet, I'm single, I don't need a big house, I don't have children. Um, it was a perfect spot to live in. Um, I'm from uh, the Washington DC suburbs, Bethesda, Maryland. And parking, uh, just, just driving for five miles takes you an hour. So this was a breath of fresh air. Um, but now that I've been living here for um, umpteen years, um, it's gotten more and more crowded. Um, I was okay with, you know, parking. And this was before the A, B, C, D thing came in. But you know, as, as we're really trying to, um, I guess redefine the harbor district, there's a lot going on. Um, there's a lot of competing priorities. Um, but I just wonder, I pay taxes. I own. Um, I pay almost four thousand in taxes for eight hundred and twenty-eight square feet. I happily do that. I have, my twin sister has four kids that we've gone through the school systems here, except for one, one went to private. But, um, I'm happily paying my, my, my share of the amenities that, that my property, um, taxes provide. And I just, you know, most of these units here are single units. Um, they don't have a lot of family. There are some with family here in our unit, but uh, for the most part, it's, it's the one parking spot and the flooding. More than anything, I just, you know, to get salt on your engine and then ruin it, um, because I'm afraid to go park, um, at the grocery store because I'm gonna get towed there too, if I park there during the winter storm. You know, you just kind of figure it out on your own and it, it can be stressful on those bad weather days or those crowded days. The other thing too is I do work from home now. Um, I will probably not be invited back to work in a corporate office knowing, uh, what I do. Um, they're gonna say, stay there. Um, I park, you know, you know, let's say, uh, I leave and go do something at twelve noon and I come back, all the spots are taken. So I just park wherever, wherever I can find a spot. And I, you know, the idea that I have to come down after business hours, come back down, um, and go and move my car because I'm afraid it's gonna get ticketed. Um, and I have gotten ticketed. Um, and just because I couldn't find another spot, you know, when I was parking midday. You know, I just wanna be able to park it and leave it there, you know, for the day. So those are just, you know, it's the same stuff that, that Linda and Debbie said. I wanna personally thank Debbie for all of her hard work. I know how, this has been difficult, um, and she's done a great job. I need to put that on record.
Uh, absolutely. I, I actually have a couple of questions quickly. When did you start getting ticketed for parking overnight wherever you wanted in Cole Parkway?
Uh, I think it was when the A, B, C, D stuff started.
Approximately when was that? I'm not gonna hold it.
I couldn't even tell you. I don't know.
I believe it's two thousand sixteen.
Twenty-sixth.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, around twenty nineteen, the ticketing started for the overnight. And you're saying that even separate and apart from overnight, there are times other than Fourth of July and Harvard Days and whatnot, where you guys are having trouble finding a spot to park just any during, at, at noon?
Right. I mean, I'd have to go way over where the ducks are sometimes. You know, way over there.
Okay, and I just, I ju- just trying to get my bearings because if I reach out to the chief police and the board of selectmen and they start talking to me, I wanna, I wanna be able to speak for you guys. So is it often you're not able to find a spot at all? Or often the spot is way over by the ducks? Or ju- just give me a general idea.
Um, so what I think, so the, the A, B, C, D, they have, um, their, their time. So A is fifteen minutes. B is maybe two hours. Uh, C is, um, a very bizarre, um.
It's a weird time.
So two o'clock in the morning. And then, then D is overnight. So it's just.
And in reality, there's no tickets happening until overnight, right?
Oh, no, I, I got a ticket the other day.
Yeah, so did I.
I had a twenty-five dollar ticket. I paid it.
It's, oh, no, you're supposed to go to Boudreaux's office. He said that he'd waived, he'd have them waived.
It's easier just to pay it sometimes. Over my head, you know, just pay it.
For you, on a regular basis, you are unable to find a spot where you will not be ticketed. But even, even if we're talking about parking from nine AM to nine PM.
Yeah, there's too many restrictions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll try to park in D, but that's when people are going and walking and they're over by the, the marina. So all of those, it's basically a lot of, it's, it's from like the, the whole, the main area from the, um, dry cleaners up to, um, it's that area that's primarily packed. And, and then during the day, there's everyone that's enjoying the harbor, you know, and they're parking towards, towards the water. And I, my hope is, just from a coordination standpoint, that I can get a D spot. You know, because sometimes I run over to my sisters in the morning, come back, I wanna get in the D spot because I know I'm not gonna be doing anything anymore driving that day. But instead, I'll, I'll have to park in A a lot of times. And then, you know, from there, I forget the car's there and possibly get ticketed.
Yeah. I, I hear you.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I wanna, I wanna keep this realistic, especially because if I say I wanna write a letter, I, I'm gonna be serious about it. And I'm gonna, until someone convinces me there's a bad idea, I wanna keep arguing that it's a good idea. I, I, I think we have to, uh, we have to keep it realistic. It, it might not be the most convenient place in Cole Parkway. I think my recommendation to you, as someone who wants to advocate for you, is give up on getting a place to park that you won't get ticketed and give up on worrying about whether or not it's a place that floods. Just because that's gonna, that's gonna be an extra ask that's gonna lose you gravitas, in my opinion. You, if you want parking, you wanna be able to pu- put your car somewhere where you can get to your house, you wanna be able to leave it there, I understand. When we start throwing in, oh, and we want a spot in Cole, Cole Parkway that doesn't flood, I, I've been to the meetings, soon enough, all the spots in Cole Parkway are gonna flood anyway. We, we might wanna eliminate that ask and keep it a little bit more realistic and, and see what we can get. That's my, your ask should be what you want your ask to be, but that's my advice on that front. Um,
My, my only, I'm just being a devil's advocate, there's already D parking in the flood zone. So if you're gonna ask it that way, wouldn't someone come back with that argument?
Certainly, it's just, uh, it's just gonna be one more thing. The, the businesses will start to speak up that, you know, listen, if the back half of the lot is flooded, we need to make sure that people can still buy things at CVS or go to the laundromat. It's a, you, you know, people are gonna be pulling on the ends of the string here. I think, I think that there may be room to find something where, where people are gonna get behind you who don't live in the harbor district. And the less people that you have against you that don't live in the harbor district, the more likely this is to come to fruition. Um, speaking from someone who often has to cast a vote for things that people are against. Um, to add to that, Bob, Tom, George, Susan, who, say, say, I write a letter and you guys make your comments to it and then we're gonna send it somewhere. We're, I, the first thing that's jumping out to me is I should see if I could have a quick conversation with the chief of police and get his thoughts on this. I think that where this will and won't go, I, I think that this thing gets rocket boosters if the chief of police says, yeah, I'd be fine with that. And if the chief police says, no, that's an absolutely terrible idea for A, B, and C, then either we know what we're up against or we change our idea to eliminate those concerns of the chief of police. But beyond that, is there somewhere other than the board of selectmen that they should go to have people look at it?
Maybe just the town administrator.
There is a parking committee. I guess my question, it kinda wraps into that, is who created this A, B, C, D thing?
I think it was someone before, I'm, I, don't quote me, but I think it was the person before Boudreaux. It was a woman. That's all I can remember.
So it was created by the town administrator?
That's, that's certainly the rumor.
Okay, yeah, I'll call it a rumor, that, because I don't know.
Cause it was, um, you know, it was what created two years ago, maybe it's time to evaluate. Do we still need A, B, C, and D, you know, um?
I don't think it worked at all. I think people just park.
People park where they park.
No one's, yeah, no one's staying there for, there's no reason for fifteen minute parking there anymore for the, like, it just, unless, you know, I don't think anyone, oh, read the signs or even park, they just parked wherever they could find a space.
I don't, uh, I, I, I hope I'm not opening myself up to any retroactive parking fees, but I park at Cole Parkway all the time and I didn't even know there were different zones. I put my car wherever there's a spot.
Oh, I knew there were.
I'm, I'm sure you can go on Situate Monthly and find the complaints.
Yeah, I knew there were zones because I go out paddling and I'm like, I'm not gonna leave my car and come back with my boat and I have a, have a towed or something. But, um, yeah, I'm curious, there is a parking committee.
Okay.
Um, I gotta look it up to see what it's called. I, that's what, it made me wonder if they created the A, B, C, D system, but it sounds like that was created outside of this.
We're hoping that we can get, um, a permanent solution, if so that different, you know, every, as everything turns over with, um, board members and things like that and, um, um, and people that are, um, running the town as they, um, you know, transition off and, um, that it's not changed every, you know, the next person that comes in on the parking committee or the town administrator or something, that it's not gonna be changed. To get something on a permanent level would be very comforting to know that. Um, you know, that's just, that, that's just a wish or hope, but to keep that in mind too, that we can make, hopefully do something on a more permanent level would be wonderful.
So apparently, there was a parking study done in twenty fifteen which made the recommendation for utilization general, uh, for the harbor uh, to, uh, the board of selectmen, which they adopted. Now, I don't know anything more, I'm just reading what's on our website, right, on the town's website and the study is, the study is available. It's a fifty-one page study.
Um, oh, look at the study, George, that makes a lot more sense because the, the idea of the town administrator unilaterally putting together of where you can and can't park sounded surprising to me. That makes more sense. I mean, maybe, maybe the board adopted a general plan and then looked to the town administrator to put the specifics.
Yes, her name's on the study as requesting the study, the town administrator.
Ah, okay.
I'm looking at the fifty-one.
And is, uh, you'll have to excuse my ignorance, but I, I purposefully don't pay attention to town politics when I am not involved in zoning matters. Is that town administrator still the town administrator?
No, no.
And, okay. What, I would propose is that the chair reaches out to the chief police to get his thoughts on this general idea that I report those thoughts back to the board with, unless the chief police totally shuts me down and convinces me that this is a terrible idea, I'll even go as far as to draft a letter that we would, I would think, send to the town administrator, the parking committee and CCing the select board and the planning board. And then I would get, uh, the, my fellow board members' thoughts. Maybe even, I, I at least, I, so, does that make sense to everyone? I thi- I think I propose that I'll, I'll try to have the conversation with the chief and get a rough draft of something together for our next meeting, which I know is going to be a bear. And then maybe we'll even potentially just have a very short line item, Janine, where we just give an update on our progress and maybe if that's a marathon meeting, then maybe we'll just read an update on our progress into the record and then table any further discussion until the meeting after that.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yes.
And that, I, George, Susan, Tom, I, I don't feel, as I'm thinking it through, if I have a meeting with the police chief or just a phone call and then I report back to the board as to what the police chief told me about his thoughts on this, I don't, I don't view that as a violation of the open meeting law if we're, if we're doing that in between.
No, not unless we discuss it, or deliberate is the word, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, and I, I think we can, we can open up discussion about, oh, based on that, what we should or shouldn't do. We can open up that at the next meeting. But I won't waste any time sharing anything I learned. Um, maybe that will give me some information. I'll throw together a very rough draft and then we can talk about cleaning it up.
Sounds good.
All right. Well, Linda, Debbie, Kathleen, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, at the very least, on the next meeting agenda, you'll see a line item, at the very least, you will hear any information that we were able to get from the police department and maybe anybody else that they directed us to also talk to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, all right, is, Bob, Tom, George, Susan, you guys good with us moving on from that?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'll, I'll agree with you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, all right, with that, we'll move on to item number four, Janine, I think we have some minutes to approve?
We don't, actually, I didn't finish them yet.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I actually don't remember receiving.
I didn't remember receiving. That's all right.
Yeah.
Next time, there's always a next meeting.
Yes.
I, I think we're more caught up with that than we, uh, than we usually have been in the past.
Yeah, than ever.
Yes.
That is great.
Thank you, Janine.
You're welcome.
I, I haven't looked at, Janine, what it looks like, uh, what the agenda looks like for next time, but, um, I, I'm not gonna let the meeting go past 10:30.
Okay.
For new matters, and I'm going to shut it off at 11:00, even a, a hard stop at 11:00. I think that, you know, this is people's time and money, and they have attorneys, and there, it's what they can do with their homes. I, speaking for myself, I'm not doing them the same services at 11:01 as I am at 9:30.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I would just, you know, maybe one day we get to the point where stopping things at 11:00 is causing a backup that's doing a disservice to the town, but I don't think we're there yet, so we'll try to move things along, I'll make that, we're not gonna let it go on into the wee hours known upfront, and what happens, and if, and if somebody wants to make a motion to change my thoughts on that at the meeting, we'll, we'll absolutely talk about that, too, but I, I don't see the harm in at least laying out that initial intention upfront at the next meeting.
Yeah, look, it's, I think it's really fair, i, if we tell people, look, this is the agenda, it's long, right? You're, you're in the order, you're in the order, we're gonna try to move this along because this person's number seven, you know, needs to get out of here at some point, and, you know, people need to be heard, but within reason, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah. All right.
Maybe that'll be like tonight and not, pretty straightforward, so.
Exactly.
Never know.
Uh, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, although, if you carry in favor?
Captain, aye.
Harrison, aye.
Captain, aye.
Right. Well, thank you very much.